Are we ready? I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting of Thursday, August 7, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Assembly Chambers. We'll have the invocation by Captain David Shattle of the Salvation Army, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Oh. Sorry, written my letter cut.
Dear God, as we begin this meeting, we acknowledge you are the source of all wisdom. We ask that you guide each leader gathered here tonight. May every discussion be thoughtful, every decision grounded in truth, and every word spoken with integrity. Bless the council first, and this assembly, our community, and all who call Kodiak home. In your holy name, pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiakalutic people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiakalutic region. We recognize the Lutic culture that enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ames.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Lidue.
Here.
Mr. Sharrett.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Whiteside.
Here.
Mayor Arnt.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is approval of agenda and consent agenda. Jared?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. For the public's information, the consent agenda consists of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 17, 2025. Next item is citizens' comments. We have two designated citizens' comment period, one at the beginning of the meeting and second one towards the end of the meeting. These comment periods are intended for general comments as well as for agenda items that are not part of a public hearing. We have two public hearing items tonight. First one is State of Alaska Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office New Winery Manufacturer Sampling Endorsement Application for Friends by the Ocean, and ordinance number FY 2025-2C. What that is, is basically budget adjustments. Comments for these items will be heard when the item is called during public hearing, so please wait until we get to that portion of the agenda. For those of you that wish to call in, the local number is 907-486-3231, toll-free number 855-492-9202. Please turn off your radio or any other listening devices to prevent feedback. For those in the audience here that would like to speak under citizens' comments, please come to the podium and sign in. Turn on the microphone. Make sure the green light is on before speaking, and speak directly into the mic. State your name for the record. Address all remarks to the assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. Who would like to come up first?
Hello, Mayor and Assembly members. Want to take a minute and talk to you about trash again, obviously in regards to Dark Lake, but also just trash in general. So, I went to Dark Lake Friday after the meeting last week, about mid-afternoon, five roll-offs, and four of the five, I checked them all just for fun, they were all full of construction debris. So, I realize there's mixed feelings about what to do, but the truth of the matter is, is inaction is action. So, your inaction and my inaction in the past, sitting up there, has continued to allow a problem to exist. We have a very expensive lined landfill. That lined landfill is being filled with construction debris every single day. That construction debris doesn't have to be there, but the only way you're going to stop it from being there, in my opinion, is to adopt UMAT and to start actually finding some people. Now, the reality is, if all you did was find and got corrected the behavior of contractors in our community, that would solve a huge percentage of the problem. So, the reality is, is that when OSHA comes to town, within five minutes of OSHA being off the airplane, every single entity in town knows that OSHA's here, adjusts behavior, stops behavior. As soon as DOT is here doing CDL inspections, immediately, within an hour of them coming off the ferry, everybody that has a CDL in town knows and adjusts behavior. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know, but that's what happens in our community. I believe that all you would have to do is write one single ticket to one contractor, and it would immediately change the behavior of our contractors in our community. The reason they're doing it is because it saves money. They're not evil people, they just are saving money. So, if I, for example, the other day, I took a load to the landfill, it cost me $192 to dispose of it. It was glass. I could have very easily shoved it in the Dark Lake dumpster. I know that that's not what the Dark Lake dumpsters are for, but maybe some people are ill-informed. So, the other reality is, is that I think every single door on every single roll-off cart, or roll, not roll cart, but roll-off dumpster, needs to have a placard. So, four placards per dumpster, about that yay big, so every single person opens it has to see that it says residential trash only, no construction debris. That may help, that will help some people, but I do believe that without this body having a discussion about it, tasking your contractor to placard every single roll-off dumpster, and then, I'm sorry, but you're going to have to find some people. I don't, I just don't see a way around it. We have a lot of borough rules and a lot of borough codes, and you don't enforce any of them because you haven't adopted UMAT. So, there's nothing you can, I can, I can do all kinds of illegal behavior, as long as I don't break state law, but as long as I violate borough code, junk vehicles, whatever, whatever, there's nothing that's done about it. So anyways, please put it on your agenda, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any phone calls? None? Who else would like to come up, please?
My name is Alan Schmidt, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Assembly. I'm here on both, on behalf of both the senior citizens of Kodiak and hospice and palliative care of Kodiak to thank you for the nonprofit support. As you all know, nonprofits play a big part in this community to make the quality of life that we have. This helps a whole lot, and, you know, I'm affiliated with both of those organizations, and so, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Alan. Who else would like to come up and speak tonight?
Hi, thank you. I'm going to try to be brief. When I did this before, was, if I don't waste a lot of time breathing, it's about three minutes and nine seconds, so I'll be.
State your name for the record, please.
I'm Nate Saboda. Thank you for that reminder. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nate Saboda. I am the air wildlife biologist for Fish and Game here in Kodiak. Excuse me. Tonight, I'm here to provide comments to the Borough Assembly regarding some of the local bear issues we have been having, specifically issues related to the, excuse me, to the landfill. But first, I'd like to quickly recognize and thank the Kodiak Police Department, Alaska Wildlife Troopers, Alaska Waste, the Solid Waste Advisory Board, and many of the responsible Kodiak citizens for their efforts in reporting and responding to bears, and their efforts to reduce human-bear conflict. This cooperation has provided a great system for us to address bear conflicts in Kodiak, which we often refer to as the Kodiak model. So, I did want to extend my appreciation to those individuals and residents. As some of you may know, the landfill has recently became the go-to place on Kodiak Island to watch and photograph bears. Each evening, about 8:30, there's a migration of photographers and bears that starts working its way towards the landfill. This is unfortunate because this is not like how we, how we prefer to showcase our bears on Kodiak Island. And to provide a little bit of background, due to some unfortunate circumstances, for about the last two years, there's been minimal maintenance on the electric fence surrounding the landfill. This lack of maintenance has resulted in multiple gaps in the fence and the lack of electrical current flowing through the fence, allowing bears and their, and their young, open access to the landfill for multiple years. Unfortunately, these bears and their young are now conditioned to non-natural foods, I use that loosely, trash, and it's unlikely they'll change their foraging habits after having access to non-natural foods for so long. This is unacceptable and unnecessary, particularly given the abundance of natural foods currently available on the landscape. This also raises some serious health concerns for local bear population, as their digestive system is not set up to deal with these types of non-natural substances. As an example, and as some of you may know, not too long ago, we had a dispatch a bear that was suffering from an intestinal blockage due to ingesting human trash. An intestinal block, intestinal blockage prevents these consumed items from passing through the animal. They're incredibly painful and often result in a slow painful death, as blood flow is cut off to the intestines, leading to tissue death, and eventually intestinal rupturing. When discovered, this bear was, was observed laying in a ditch, unable to move, and obviously in incredible pain. Unfortunately, it had to be euthanized. But in addition to not being healthy for bears and being against state regulation, having open access for bears to enter the landfill also raises safety concerns for members of the public and for landfill staff who are working within close proximity to these bears. To the best of our knowledge, there are somewhere between eight to 13 bears currently in the landfill at any given time feeding on trash, including a sound cubs that we believe.
Continue, Nate. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. I'm almost done, really. Including a sound cubs that we believe dented inside the landfill last winter. This is not a safe place for people or for bears. One bear has already been killed by another bear inside the landfill this summer, and there have been multiple incidents with landfill employees having run-ins with bears inside the fence. However, I do want to point out that both the current and the former staff, Dave, Jenna, now Cody, and others have done a great job trying to fix the fence, given their limited time and resources. But unfortunately, there still remains a few major issues with the fence that require additional resources, time, and funding, and it's unclear if the landfill staff have the time and the resources to address the issue in a timely manner. It's the hope in Fish and Game, as well as our partners, the Wildlife Troopers, that this issue can be addressed and remedied as soon as possible. My hope tonight was to provide you guys some information that I'm not sure everyone's aware of, and hopefully generate support for the landfill staff to hopefully get this issue resolved before fall. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Nate.
Yep.
Are there any phone calls? Seeing none, anyone else in the audience like to come forward and speak under citizens' comments tonight? Seeing none, we'll continue. Are there any committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearings. First public hearing is State of Alaska Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office New Winery Manufacturer Sampling Endorsement Application for Friends by the Ocean. Jared?
Move to voice non-protest to the State of Alaska Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office New Winery Manufacturer Manufacturer Sampling Endorsement Application for Friends by the Ocean located at 38057 Chinac Highway, and direct the clerk to notify AMCO of this decision.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova Javier, Borough Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. You have seen this, I believe, back in May, and back then, we had an objection, or we have voiced non-protest with condition of correcting the address, and this item before you corrects that address. And then also, there's a rebranding of the Friends by the Ocean LLC, and they're renaming their business to Friends by the Ocean, dropping the LLC. So, it's back before you. We have sent public hearing notices, and none were returned. So, we've, we ask that you support the approval of this application. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions at this time of the clerk? Seeing none, go ahead and recess the regular meeting and open the public hearing. If you are calling in, the local phone number is 907-486-3231, the toll-free number 855-492-9202. Please turn off your radio or any listening device to prevent feedback. If you are in the audience here, please come to the podium and sign in. Turn on the microphone. Make sure the green light is on before speaking, and speak directly into the mic. State your name for the record, and address all remarks to the assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on behalf of this request? Are there any phone calls? Hearing and seeing none, close the public hearing, and reconvene the regular meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Ames.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Lidue.
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is ordinance number FY 2025-2C, Amending Ordinance 2025-2 Fiscal Year 2025 Budget by amending budgets to account for various revenues that are over-budget, providing for additional expenditures, and moving funds between projects. Jared?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2025-02C.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy Williams, Borough Manager.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This ordinance is the final fiscal year 2025 budget amendment. These changes cover items or circumstances not known or expected during the initial creation of the fiscal year 2025 budget. In this amendment, there are 11 requests. If you want to follow along, the easiest is the table in Section 2, which is on line 58 of the ordinance. Number one, a transfer of $8,978.59 from the General Fund to the Capital Project Kodiak Fisheries Research Center Facility Fuel Spill Project to cover expenses that were not reimbursed. Number two is a transfer of $100,000 from within the General Fund from the Borough Management Department to the Engineering and Facilities Department due to project and staffing changes at the Engineering and Facilities Department. Number three is a transfer within the General Fund of $120,000 from the Community Development Department to Engineering Facilities due to project and staffing changes in the Engineering and Facilities Department. Number four is a transfer of $26,165.64 from Buildings and Grounds to the Capital Project KIB Air Conditioner Removal and Replacement due to completion of the project. Number five is a return of $844.17 from the Capital Project Fund Emergency Borough Boiler Repair Project to the Building and Grounds Fund due to the completion of the project. Number six is a return of $51,234.04 from the Capital Projects Fund Peterson HVAC and Roof Replacement to the Building and Grounds Fund due to completion of the project. Number seven is a transfer of $300,000 from within the Renewal and Replacement Fund Islandwide UST Removal Replacement Work to continue on the UST removal for the ADC relay, ADEC regulations in Karlek. Number eight is a transfer of $125,000 from the Renewal and Replacement Fund to the Capital Project Fund for the Mill Bay Beach Stairs Replacement Project. Number nine is a transfer of $22,068.01 from the Solid Waste Disposable Collection Fund to the Capital Projects Fund for the Baylor Floor Overlay Replacement Project to close out the project. Number 10 is a transfer of $750,000 from the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center Fund to the Capital Projects Fund for the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center Decontamination Project. And finally, number 11 is a transfer of $250,000 from the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center Fund to the Capital Projects Fund for the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center Seawater Intake Pump Replacement Project. Our Finance Director is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of staff? Any discussion? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and move into the public hearing, or do you want to say it? No. At this time, recess the regular meeting, open the public hearing. Once again, if you are calling in, the local number is 907-486-3231, toll-free number 855-492-9202. And for those in the room wishing to speak, please come to the podium and sign in. Turn on the microphone. Make sure the green light is on before speaking, and speak directly into the mic. State your name for the record, and address all remarks to the assembly as a body and not to a member thereof. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak on this at this time? Seeing none, no phone calls. Having no phone calls, close the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting, and see, Larry, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to thank our Finance Director. Your work, the years that I've been on the Assembly, has been exemplary accurate, and you've always been able to answer any question. And I can vote to move these monies with confidence, knowing between you and the manager are doing a good job. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Lidue.
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside.
Yes.
Mr. Ames.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next item we have is Borough Managers' Report. Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I go through my written remarks, I just wanted to let you know that Cody, our Engineering Facilities Director, does have a meeting with Mr. Saboda on Monday. They're going to meet at the landfill to walk that fence so we can take care of those problems. So, So that is in the works. What I have written tonight, I attended a monthly meeting tonight, or this week, with the Planning and Environmental Linguages Team for the replacement of the two bridges out at the Russian River and Sergeant Creek. Staff helped them create a focus group for this study. After that focus group is created, they're going to give a timeline. As soon as that timeline is out, we'll start sharing that information with the Assembly. They had about ninety organizations listed that we kind of narrowed down to who would actually be able to give some good information on the project. So that's starting to move forward. At North Star Elementary, we're scheduled for a presentation next week at our work session from the Shunak Daycare Work Group about the possibility of moving their daycare to the North Star building. We have a walkthrough with the school district scheduled for Wednesday, August twentieth, to evaluate the condition of the building before it's handed over to the borough. The utility switch-over has already begun. Electricity and solid waste bills were put into KIB's name yesterday. At the Women's Base Service Area, I attended their monthly meeting on Tuesday night to ensure the transition to the new road service area contractor was going smoothly. They seem to be adjusting well to both the new contractor and the new contract. The new contract requires work orders and permission from the borough for projects over $10,000 with, which is new changes, but everyone seems to be adjusting just fine out there. August first was the deadline for the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation Rural Professional Housing Grant Program. If you were going to apply for it, you had to have in your letter of intent. We haven't really discussed any land that we would use for that yet, but we didn't want to miss the opportunity this year, so we did fill out the letter of intent in case the Assembly decides to go in that direction. Next week, Mayor Art and I will be traveling to Yukyavik for the Summer AML Conference. Sima Groot will be the administrative official during my absence, so she'll be sitting here for next week's meeting. In Community Development, the Planning and Zoning Commission has a work session on August thirteenth. They will include discussion items related to code amendments to Title seventeen related to childcare facilities and potential changes to the definitions in the chapter regarding short-term rentals. In addition, the work session will conduct a packet review for August twentieth. The packet review includes land disposal items for the island lake road property and two tax-foreclosed properties, a similar use determination for daycare services for North Star building within public use or public lands district, the capital improvement program, and proposed amendments to the commission's bylaws. In Finance, the first deadline for those wishing to make half payments of your property taxes, deadline is Friday, August fifteenth. And we are also advertising for a temporary employee to fill a gap as a temporary receptionist, so our employee that is usually up at the front desk can join in the training for the new Tyler software transition. In Assessing, staff mailed out thirty-four denial letters to twenty-six senior citizens and eight disabled veterans. We still have twenty-three of those undetermined. There are no senior citizens or disabled good cause appeals, so that hearing was removed from the agenda. We did have two cases from the May fifth Board of Equalization that went to the Superior Court. Both of those cases have been settled, and we're waiting on the dismissals to be filed with the court. Assessing is working in villages and remote areas this year. They have a lot of that work done, and the weather has been very cooperative for them. The AAAO Summer Meeting, which is the professional organization for assessors, have a summer meeting that the, we will be attending virtually on August twelfth and thirteenth in the morning hours, so staff will be limited during those times. Engineering and Facilities Department, our Engineering Facilities Director is out this week. We'll be back in the office on the eleventh. Out at the KFRC, our Industrial Pump Alaska Order is down to eleven weeks out. At the landfill, we have two main things going on besides the bears. We have the Regional Solid Waste Management Plan. KIB and Canis staff have been actively coordinating with the contractor to gather data. They have a survey that's ready to go out. We got to practice taking that today, and it looks like it's in good shape. They also have the landfill surface water monitoring project out. Proposals will do on the fourth, and we had four different firms put in proposals. The proposals are being evaluated by a team consisting of the landfill supervisor, the lead sheet treatment lead, and trainee, one Assembly member, and the chairman of the Architectural Review Board. Those evaluations will be averaged, and a cumulative score sheet will be presented to the Assembly with the apparent successful proposal. A couple of small projects we have going on right now are the Mill Bay Beach Stair Replacement and the Environmental Services Request for Proposals. That's an RFP that we're working on right now that should be ready to go out in the next couple of weeks. We're getting ready to work on the laboratory services for LTP sample testing, janitorial services contract needs to be rebid, and our solid waste management contract. We start, work hard on that because we're trying to get that done and out on the street by January twenty twenty-six. In Information Technology, IT has spent a lot of time working on communications with the landfill. They've had some phone issues, and they do a lot of work supporting the assessing and taxation enterprise migration for both assessing and finance. We are also asking Fred to go to North Star and assess the IT there, so we can see what equipment we can use and what equipment needs to be replaced in order to have security cameras out at North Star for when we fully take on that building. And that's all I have tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, you'd indicated that you had filled out the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation Professional Housing Grant application to reserve a position. What does the follow-on steps of that look like?
It's a up to $700,000 one-time funding that you can use for remodel, and that's what I originally talked to them about when I thought we were going to remodel the old mental health buildings. But other communities have used it to build single or duplex for housing for professionals. So we would have to find land that we were going to use for that. So there is a possibility with those lots that were already scheduled to dispose of that we could use one of those lots or find more lots to go that direction and apply for that grant.
Continue, Ryan.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So what do you need from the Assembly? You alluded in your presentation that you were kind of waiting for further direction. What do you need from us to continue to pursue that $700,000?
This is an interesting grant because the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation specifically says they want it to be inside of city limits, and then they give a certain city size. And so we're, right now, unless they waive that, it would have to be with inside of the city of Kodiak limit, so we'd be looking for any borough land that's within the city limits, which narrows down our land choices significantly. The, I haven't talked to the city yet to see if they're applying for this, and it might just be we support them and they're, go for it, but I didn't want to give up the chance to apply for it for ourselves.
You want to continue, Ryan?
Yeah, I would love to see us tie this to the mental health buildings and, and give some form of trajectory to that project that is absolutely dormant and without a destination right now that would perhaps encourage further discussion and give that a destination while land is at a premium here. If, get a couple thumbs up on that, that would be direction enough, I think. Thanks.
Larry?
Thank you. You mentioned the, the bridge out at the flats, the two bridges discussion.
Yes.
Is part of that plan, are they going to have a walking pathway on those bridges so that people walking back and forth to fish will be able to cross those bridges safely?
Right now, the plan is just for in-kind replacement, but the Alaska DOT does have language with their goals are to pay attention to pedestrian traffic as much as they can. So we have brought that up. We have also brought up the amount of pedestrian traffic that is out there, bear viewing and fishing. So that request is in. They, this team who's doing the grant is not the team that's assigning money from South Coast, but they eventually will be. So in our first meeting with them, I talked to them about the pedestrian needs out there. And really, if we just had to pick one over the other, the Russian River Bridge would be the bridge that needs that pedestrian pathway. But then when we look at like the Short Trails project and what ITN is looking for, it would be really great if we could get on both. But yes, they are aware of that desire.
Would it, if I could, would it help if there was a resolution from the Assembly to really take that into account?
If we include, when it's time for the Assembly to give feedback during that Pell Study through that focus group, I think that would be a really good time just to let them know that that's an Assembly priority as well. I don't know the answer about the resolution, but I can certainly ask them if that would help.
Okay, thank you. Also, with regard to the Mill Bay stairs, are they going to replace the stairs that are there? Because I was hoping, and I should have asked this earlier, that they would put the stairs right in the middle of the parking lot, you know, where you go down. Because otherwise, if they are where they are, they have to cross the salmon stream, you know, to get to the main beach area.
Patricia, do you remember where the placement is? They are replacing the stairs, and the ARB has seen this. In our last ARB meeting, they've requested these designs to go from sixty-five to a hundred, so that's where we're at.
Yeah, the stairs are going to be replaced in-kind in the same spot that they're, they're at. It's not actually crossing the stream there, it's just right next to it. And we did have the Jensen Yorba Waller Architects and Engineering, they brought in a civil stormwater person to evaluate the runoff water from that, just to make sure that we weren't interrupting the anadromous stream that was there.
But just so I understand, when they replace the bridge, it's going to be on the left side of the drainage instead of the right side? Is that correct?
It's going to be in the exact same place that it's at. It's just going to be...
It's not moving.
Correct.
Which means it's on the left side of the stream. Okay.
Yeah.
I, I wish it was in the middle where people actually want to go down to the beach instead of all the way at the end where they have to wade through the water there to get to the other side, unless I really am missing it. Just a thought. Thank you.
Beau?
Thank you. I just, just a quick note to thank Manager Williams and Director Allen for working with our local wildlife biologist to develop a plan to, to shore up our fencing there at the landfill. I mean, thinking about how many bears are there now and that now they're denning up, you know, we need to focus on public safety, not only for, for the community, but for landfill staff, and then reduce the amount of people that are going out there and encouraging this behavior. So thank you all for, for working towards a plan. And Madam Manager, if you need any additional resources through contracting, please let us know. I think this is something we should prioritize. So thank you all for, for the help, including our local wildlife folks.
Jared?
Thank you. So I read the Governor's Administrative Order number 359. I'm a little concerned about the viability of grants coming through the state. Have, in your circles, have, what, what have you heard? And this is kind of, you know, piggybacking off the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation grant, which is huge, and I imagine that was going to be something that's going to be looked at. Have you, what, what have you heard? Have you heard anything?
Those orders just came out on Tuesday, so there hasn't been a lot of talk, but I would assume the AML will address that next week at the summer conference. So I should have more information after we get back next week. I think that, like, the commentary that came out saying how those types of orders affected the federal government and how they thought it would closely align here in the state would absolutely question if those grants were still going to be around. But I am hoping to get more information after next week.
Anyone else? Okay. Then, next item is messages from the Borough Mayor. The only thing I'd like to say, and you'll hear it again from the clerk's office, is it's election season, and sign-up is between August first and August fifteenth. For, you have the service districts, and you have the Assembly, the School Board, and the Mayor. So anybody wishing to put their names in for any of those, please see the clerks and get it taken care of. Thank you. Next is new business. First is contracts. Contract number FY 2026-6, Kodiak Island Borough Facilities Contract with MK Enterprises LLC. Jared?
Move to reject all bids and authorize the Borough Manager to reissue the invitation to bid.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy Williams, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The previous Kodiak Island Borough Facilities Road Maintenance and Repair's contract expired in 2020. With all the road service area contracts being updated, I directed staff to issue a similar invitation to bid for the KIB facilities contract. Staff issued invitation to bid for this contract on June eleventh, 2025. The invitation to bid was advertised for the designated three weeks in accordance with KIB Code 3.30.040, and bids were due by July seventeenth, 2025. A mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on July seventh, 2025, with four contractors in attendance. At the bid opening, staff received three pack, bid packages. Initially, a maintenance LLC was identified as the apparent low bidder based on bid tabulation. However, however, after a final review and processing of the bid packages, in accordance with KIB Code 3.30.050, staff determined that MK Enterprise LLC was the lowest-cost responsible bidder with a responsive bid package. In your packet tonight, we've include, included a timeline, and you'll remember last week that Assembly Member Sher, asked for a legal opinion on what would happen if we were to award this contract to the second bidder, which was MK Enterprises, while they would move into the first responsive bidder slot, or if we were to reject all bids. That legal opinion is in front of you tonight. And so if you've had time to digest that, when we had agenda setting on Tuesday, we had a conversation with the Mayor and the DPO and I, and it was suggested that we give more consideration to rejecting all bids instead of staff's recommendation to award the contract to MK Enterprises. And so in the email that I sent you yesterday, I said this conversation would definitely benefit from some more public conversation by the Assembly, so we can decide what direction we want to go. I don't think there's any question that we don't want unbalanced bids, it's just a matter of when do we start enforcing that? In the invitation to bid package, there is a section that says if any of the unit price bids are excessively unbalanced, either above or below the amount of a reasonable bid to the potential detriment of KIB, then it can be considered a non-responsive bid. That's what we leaned on when we made the decision of marking that first contractor as unresponsive. But there's been a lot more conversation since then. There's been protests by contractors and contractors coming in and telling us that KIB has a history of accepting unbalanced bids, and it wasn't fair that we started doing this right now in the middle of a bid and asked us to reconsider. So we thought the best move is to move it to the Assembly and decide which direction you would like to go.
Okay. Ryan, and then Dave.
I can let Dave go first. I'm going to use all ten minutes of my allotted time. Dave, do you want to go first?
Sure, I'm, I'm going to be brief. I'm not going to support this motion. I don't think giving somebody who's non-responsive another bite at the apple is the ethical thing to do. It was clear in the RFP that unbalanced bids would be considered non-responsive. We have a new, we have new staff in place. New staff bring new eyes to things, and while perhaps unfortunate for some, I, I think that it is well within the realm of our Engineering and Facilities Director to have declared that bid unresponsive, and I'm going to, for that reason, not vote to deny all bids.
Okay, Ryan, and then Beau.
Okay, so after spending the majority of my day today going through the entire solicitation process, the attorney's opinion, and everything else, I'm going to just put it all out there. Page three of forty, KIB Facilities Contract, contract number FY 2026-06. Kodiak Island Borough reserves the right to reject or accept any or all bids, to cancel the procurement, to waive irregularities or informalities in the bid or the bidding, to postpone the bid opening, and to give particular attention to the qualifications of a bidder. Fast forward to page five, Non-Responsive Bids, 5.0 subsection C. Some of the reasons a bid may be rejected for non responsiveness are: irregularities of any kind which may tend to make the bid incomplete, indefinite, ambiguous as to its meaning, or in conflict with a KIB's bid document. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read a couple case laws. I don't necessarily agree with the case law that was cited in our attorney's letter, so I've got my own case law that is more recent and within the state of Alaska. McBurney &amp; Associates versus the State, 1988. Silver Bow Construction versus the Alaska Department of Administration, 2014. Granite &amp; Quality Asphalt. These are all case law in the state of Alaska that are upheld for being materially unbalanced. So what does material unbalanced mean? Sorry for the sigh. Material unbalanced. Let's see, the procurement code and the courts distinguish between a bid that is simply mathematically unbalanced and one that is materially unbalanced. So this is not a mathematical error. It is purposeful in materially unbalancing to sway a procurement. Additionally, state of Alaska... Additionally, State of Alaska law allows procurement officers discretion and has a certain amount of discretion to evaluate bids and determine if an unbalancing is material. Courts and administrative judges will typically uphold the procurement officer's decision if it's based on a reasonable analysis and not abuse of that discretion. Just going to cut down to it since, for the essence of time. I will leave this with the Clerks for further dissemination to you guys. Kodiak Island Borough does not have a basis to reject all bids. I do not support this motion. I think that, as Mr. Johnson stated, we do have a new era of employees in front of us. I think that this showcases not only the way things have been done, but I think it's the new way that things need to be done. And I think that personally attacking our staff for trying to do this is not only uncalled for, it's unethical, and I think that we, as the Assembly and the governance of Kodiak, need to do better to protect our staff and protect our taxpayer dollars. So, I do not support rejecting all bids. I would move this for an award, and I would send that message, just as we had public testimony tonight. It only takes one to get behavior to change, and here it is. So, that's all I've got.
Beau, and then Steve.
Thank you. I reviewed these materials as well, and this is very straightforward for me. We need to apply uniform, objective decision-making when considering Kodiak Island Borough Code, and this is a perfect example of us doing so. The reasoning for this is how it's always been done will never fly with me. If anything, that's, that statement's typically a red flag when I hear it. So, I also will not be supporting rejecting all bids. We need to support our staff and their decision-making by following and applying code objectively.
Steve.
Well, I have a couple of questions first. There were four bidders, correct?
Yes. Well, there are four who showed up to the pre-bid meeting, only three actual bids packages were submitted.
Okay. Um. It's my understanding that one of the bidders, and I don't mean this against anyone in particular because I know the bidders, I know the people involved, already was awarded four bids and then decided they didn't want one of them for snow removals, is this correct?
One of the contractors won, or were the lowest bidder for all four road service areas, but then accepted three of the four road service areas, yes.
But they chose not to accept one?
Yes, that's right.
I feel that if we put out snow contracts and then they say, oh, we don't want that one, then they really shouldn't be eligible to bid on other ones. It's kind of a way of, we bid on everything and we pick the ones we want, and that's not fair to the other bidders.
Our code currently doesn't support that thought, not that you're wrong or right, but our code wouldn't back that up. We don't have language in there that says if you turn down one certain kind of contract that you're eligible to bid on another one of similar nature, but as we're reviewing our code and making updates, that is something that we could consider, or put that in the individual invitation to bids as applicable.
Okay. Thank you.
Jared, and then Larry.
Ryan had one too.
Thank you. So, I went, I went back on, back and forth on which motion to make. I settled on this one for, for a couple reasons. One, well, first, before I begin, I don't disagree with anything that's been said up here so far. What I, what I landed on, and this is from, I talked to a couple of, you know, retired people who have been involved in bidding practice, biddings, and bids in the past, and, you're right, unbalanced bids were definitely, you know, not codified as past practice, but understood as past practice. And to, even though, even though the qualification for unbalanced bids in the contract has, has always been there, it's one of those things that, as far as I understand, most, if not all, contractors understand that it's, it's never been enforced. And so, we have that standard in there. I think it's okay to do a reset and let everyone know that the old ways of doing things are, will not fly going forward. These are our standards. It's, I think it's a little short-term pain for some long-term stability in the bidding process for, for anyone, for anyone. So, I think, I don't disagree, I think this could be the, the one, this is the case right now to let future bidders know that going forward, this is how things are going to be done with, with the Borough. So, that's, that's why I landed on making, on making this motion, just because it was not clear to anybody that we were actually going to enforce this thing that we had never enforced in the past. And so, so that's why I landed on, I landed on this motion. I'll stop for now.
Okay. Larry, then Ryan, then Steve.
Just so I understand, I was a little confused. I understand the DPO and the Mayor and the Manager met and discussed this issue, and you suggested that we should go out to bid, is that what you said earlier? I'm a bit concerned with that.
I, what I said was, staff's recommendation from last week was discussed in agenda setting. Every, when we go into agenda setting, we go over the, whatever meeting is coming up, and then the meetings for the rest of the month, and when we, we kind of breeze by this, and I asked the Mayor and the DPO to go back and talk about this because there were questions about it. So, after that discussion, we decided that we should talk about it some more at the regular meeting and talk about all the options that we had, especially given the fact that someone had asked for a lawyer's opinion on both paths forward.
I appreciate that. Other than during the work session, we had that discussion as an assembly with the full assembly, and then we had a motion that is given by the DPO, who normally reads motions. So, somebody else wouldn't have even volunteered to make another motion because you normally do that, and the decision for that was made during that. And I'm a little uncomfortable with that, just to be real blunt, but I'm not questioning anybody's ethics or anything, I just think we need to be careful. What I would say is this, you know, there's the right way and the wrong way. And the right way is to follow our code. And one of the things I've really appreciated since I've been on the Assembly is the leadership of our employees and our manager to say, you know, it's a new, it's a new generation, it's a different way of doing things, and to not follow our code. After we've asked our staff to follow, follow the code, after we've told the public it's not business as usual, as we've heard many times in the last couple of years that they appreciate that we're doing the right thing. You know, I feel bad that, you know, there's a change, but the rules are the rules. It's pretty clear, clear, and what kind of precedent do we set that because we did something in the past, and I suspect that there's other things that we did in the, perhaps, in the past that aren't kosher, that every time we run into those, we're going to stop and not follow what our code says? I believe we are trying to follow our code. And during our presentation, when we were sitting as a board of equalization, or we were, our attorney said over and over again, follow the rules. Follow the rules. And I don't have any place in who these people are, or one way or the other. I mean, obviously, you know, you know people in town and what they do, but our staff made a good recommendation, they followed the code, and I don't know how we couldn't support them. And when people do imbalanced, generally, I'm guessing, because I've never done one, but they know what they're doing. It's a, it's a strategy to be the low bidder, and because of that, there are steps in our code to prevent that from happening because it ends up costing us more money. So, everything that's been said, I generally agree with, and I certainly appreciate, you know, the leadership, but I, I could never vote to redo it again. It's just, it's not the right thing to do. Thank you.
Ryan, and then Steve.
Thank you. I just want to kind of tie everything back together, try not to belabor the point. I have a State of Alaska Contractors License. That's the same requirement that we ask in this solicitation, and part of my State of Alaska Contractors License says that I will conform with state statute and administrative law. Part of that state statute and administrative law is procurement guidelines. So, we can't say, hey, this isn't in Kodiak Island Borough Code to do this because my contractor license says I have to follow state law. It's a state contractor's license. So, the, I didn't know it wasn't a law, doesn't work. I spend most of my day consulting for clients in both the environmental and the occupational health and safety law, and both of those entities have pushed out letters of interpretation that says, I didn't know, isn't an excuse. Here's your fine or your penalty. And it's sad that we even have to come to this discussion about choosing right and wrong, because I truly do feel that this is a, a personal issue that's trickled into a political one, and I think that this could have very easily been avoided. I also understand that we live in a small community with a very small resource pool, and this isn't an easy discussion because we have personal relationships with all of the bidders, all of the contractors. This is not a, this isn't a discussion that's just without consequence. This is a discussion that, hey, guys, we need to probably tighten things up a little bit because these are taxpayer dollars. This is transparency. We've been boasting our transparency in this administration since the Manager took position. So, to do anything other than vote to accept these bids at this point, we just shouldn't be doing anything other than accepting bids. Thanks.
Steve, and then Jared.
Having been, been involved with many bidding processes, and a few where all have been rejected and it goes out to rebid, I don't know anyone who likes that. It's kind of, let's put all the cards on the table and then play the game. You've seen what everyone else bid, you know their, what they're thinking. It is very difficult for contractors, and my personal opinion is, it's almost unfair because of information gained from the original bids. Thank you.
Jared.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify something that Assemblymember Ludu brought up. Yes, in agenda-setting sessions, we go over the staff report and clarify the motions and make sure, you know, at least we are clear on what's going on. I was in and out of the work session last week, so I, I had asked for a lot of clarification from the staff and for additional motions to be in here. So, if there's any confusion or obfuscation or anything, that's, that's on me, and I apologize.
Beau.
Thank you. I think what we're looking at here is just, just baseline accountability, right? We're up here to make unbiased, objective decisions adhering to Kodiak Island Borough Code. We should not defer those decisions based on convenience or fear of litigation. We should apply these objectively and uniformly, or uniformly every time we're up here, sitting on this dais. To me, this is a simple accountability issue, the public's here watching, the public's listening, we are accountable to the citizens of this community to uphold the code, and this is very straightforward for me. Will it create a minor disruption for some providers of these services? Probably. However, it sets the stage for what comes next. I don't think there's any benefit to delaying that. Folks will know now that we are upholding code, and this is how business should be done in responsible government.
Well, I'm going to quote something that Larry said. Rules are rules. Staff isn't following all the rules on this. There's stuff that wasn't presented to you. For instance, there's a form that was required to be signed off by the Finance Department that was supposed to be enclosed. Only one out of three bidders said, and it says shall. So, if you're going to look at the rules are the rules, you got problems throughout this. The other thing is, you're looking at this based upon one hour on a piece of equipment as an average on there. So, I think you need to be looking at what the times are, what the charges, rather than one hour on each equipment and valuing it on a, on an average. So, there are problems, other problems with the bid, and you don't have all of the information, but we'll see what, what happens. So, when rules are rule.
Steve, and then Beau.
It's kind of weird, but I need to ask for a clarification. You said, you know, one hour, piece of equipment, this, that. Is that how the, the bid was set up?
Yes.
I have a problem rejecting all bids because we put out a bad request for bids. If that's not how it should have been done, then we should have known better, and it should have been done before it went out. Because if those were how the rules were set up and people bid on that, then they did what they were told to do, and we kind of have to bite the bullet and accept the responsibility that we blew it. Bidders didn't.
Beau.
Again, that's my opinion.
Sorry. Beau.
I think I just want to address the comment about the form mentioned previously. Our attorney did weigh in on this, so we do have information regarding that form, and our Borough Attorney's opinion is that it's a formality and does not give any contractor an advantage in terms of either price or ability to back out. I do not see this as an issue precluding, preclude, precluding award. So, to me, that form mentioned is not an issue here.
Larry.
I just wanted to check with the Clerk. If we vote no on this motion, could we reintroduce a more positive motion, or what would be the process here if we wanted to go the other way?
Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly, Mr. Ludu, yes, you may introduce another motion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jared.
Just, I think of the, just the interest of moving this along, I would like to move to rescind the motion.
Okay. And you may do that with the agreement of the person who seconded it.
Scott.
I seconded it, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. The motion is rescinded. Thank you.
And then, move to authorize the Borough Manager to execute Contract Number FY twenty-twenty-six dash zero-six for Kodiak Island Borough Facilities Contract with MK Enterprise LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Roll call vote on the, oops, I'm sorry, Amy, I didn't see.
I don't want to hold up the wheels of progress, but I did want to say, obviously, this, through this process, there's some things that we learned. We can add definitions of what a responsive and responsible bidder is into the ITB. We can also, in our Borough Code three-point-three-zero-zero-eight-zero lists out qualities of the lowest responsible bidder, but we can also add language in there that clarifies responsible and responsive, so that there is absolutely no doubt on what that means when we're referring to it in our future ITBs. And then, it is my fault, and I will take full responsibility, when Cody started as interim E and F Director, I said I wanted to undo and find all deals that were under contract, and this is not the first contractor that we've upset. This is the third very visibly contractor that has come in and been upset because I didn't agree with deals and situations that have been in place in the past, and we do have some practice, as Assemblymember Ludu said, that was not kosher, and we're undoing that. And so, this is a part of the ugly side of different leadership and having people in new positions that will listen to direction.
Any further? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ludu?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
So, we are asking permission to move forward with this.
Any questions? Larry?
When you mentioned this during our work session, and you talked about not painting the building, and I think you were actually more aggressive in your words in saying that it can't be painted because some of the wood is rotten. And so, what I heard is that we have an old building right next to a building full of cods that isn't strong enough even to be painted. Is that a concern?
Absolutely. We did not want to limit it to contractors that could do general construction and painting. We were trying to keep it open. And so, we'll have to, as another project, work on the replacement of that building.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next is contract number FY 2026-9, Authorization to Contract with Darktrace for Network Security Appliance and Security Services. Jared?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to approve contract number FY 2026-09 for Network Security Appliance and Security Service with Darktrace in the amount not to exceed $74,633 for over three years of IT security support and services.
There's seconded. Been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The borough currently utilizes Darktrace's on-premise cybersecurity solution to support its IT security infrastructure. The solution includes AI-driven network threat detection, real-time monitoring, and active defense capabilities. The current agreement with Darktrace is set to expire on September 30th to ensure uninterrupted cybersecurity protection and maintain compliance with our IT security standards. The IT department recommends renewing the contract for additional three years. Because the total contract cost is over my $50,000 limit, we're asking the Assembly to approve the $74,633 to put this in place for the next three years.
Any questions? Larry?
Thank you. I don't know if the Assembly is aware or most of the public, but at one time in the past, not so long ago, our servers were held hostage, and the borough had to pay a ransom to gain their software, their operations back. They completely shut down the borough. And I think we had to pay, I'm not sure how many thousands of dollars we had to pay to retrieve. And under Fred's leadership and the reports that I've been getting since he came here, I think we're, they're doing an exemplary job trying to protect our data. And some of the steps that he's followed are just state-of-the-art. And so, I really appreciate the job that he's doing, and I appreciate the fact that he's keeping us safe because if somebody took over our service again, it would shut down the borough completely. Thank you.
Any further? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Next is resolutions, and the first is resolution number FY 2026-4, Designating Community Development Department Director Chris French as the temporary administrative official during the absence or disability of the Borough Manager and designated administrative official. Jared?
Move to adopt resolution number FY 2026-04.
There's seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the recent departure of our temporary administrative official, I am putting forth the nomination of Chris French, our Community Development Director, as the temporary administrative official to serve during both the manager's absence and that of the designated official. The effective date of the resolution is August 21st, 2025, which aligns with Mr. French's two-year anniversary at the borough.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Next is resolutions, and the first is resolution number FY 2026-4, Designating Community Development Department Director Chris French as the temporary administrative official during the absence or disability of the Borough Manager and designated administrative official. Jared?
Move to adopt resolution number FY 2026-04.
There's seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the recent departure of our temporary administrative official, I am putting forth the nomination of Chris French, our Community Development Director, as the temporary administrative official to serve during both the manager's absence and that of the designated official. The effective date of the resolution is August 21st, 2025, which aligns with Mr. French's two-year anniversary at the borough.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next is contract number FY 2026-9, Authorization to Contract with Darktrace for Network Security Appliance and Security Services. Jared?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to approve contract number FY 2026-09 for Network Security Appliance and Security Service with Darktrace in the amount not to exceed $74,633 for over three years of IT security support and services.
There's seconded. Been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The borough currently utilizes Darktrace's on-premise cybersecurity solution to support its IT security infrastructure. The solution includes AI-driven network threat detection, real-time monitoring, and active defense capabilities. The current agreement with Darktrace is set to expire on September 30th to ensure uninterrupted cybersecurity protection and maintain compliance with our IT security standards. The IT department recommends renewing the contract for additional three years. Because the total contract cost is over my $50,000 limit, we're asking the Assembly to approve the $74,633 to put this in place for the next three years.
Any questions? Larry?
Thank you. I don't know if the Assembly is aware or most of the public, but at one time in the past, not so long ago, our servers were held hostage, and the borough had to pay a ransom to gain their software, their operations back. They completely shut down the borough. And I think we had to pay, I'm not sure how many thousands of dollars we had to pay to retrieve. And under Fred's leadership and the reports that I've been getting since he came here, I think we're, they're doing an exemplary job trying to protect our data. And some of the steps that he's followed are just state-of-the-art. And so, I really appreciate the job that he's doing, and I appreciate the fact that he's keeping us safe because if somebody took over our service again, it would shut down the borough completely. Thank you.
Any further? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Next is resolutions, and the first is resolution number FY 2026-4, Designating Community Development Department Director Chris French as the temporary administrative official during the absence or disability of the Borough Manager and designated administrative official. Jared?
Move to adopt resolution number FY 2026-04.
There's seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the recent departure of our temporary administrative official, I am putting forth the nomination of Chris French, our Community Development Director, as the temporary administrative official to serve during both the manager's absence and that of the designated official. The effective date of the resolution is August 21st, 2025, which aligns with Mr. French's two-year anniversary at the borough.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Next is resolution number FY 2026-5, Resolution of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, allocating fiscal year 2026 Kodiak Island Borough nonprofit funding. Jared?
Move to adopt resolution number FY 2026-05.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the work sessions on July 10th and July 31st, members of the Assembly reviewed applications submitted by local nonprofit organizations for the use of this funding and discussed how budgeted funds will be dispersed. The resolution approves the distribution of funding to local nonprofit organizations for fiscal year '26 as reflected in the attached spreadsheet. We've also spoken with our Finance Director about how we will move funds from the different funds that the Assembly decided on at our last meeting. That will all happen in the first quarterly budget amendment for fiscal year '26, so sometime in April, or, no, I'm thinking January, July, October, December. At the end of September, moving into October, you'll see that first budget amendment come through, and that will, you'll see them move from the Fisheries Development Fund and from the opioid funds into the nonprofit categories.
At this time, I'd like to take a three-minute recess, and...
Jared, if I could have you in Nova, back row, please, for just a quick clarification.
Actually, I've got MIF tonight. I told myself I was mowing the lawn and pulling out sod along the driveway, which is a miserable job, that I was going to be really happy tonight.
I just hate re-bids.
That was my concern too, right? Because then, like you said, everybody's got information on the original. But all that one is a dis...
We're still down one.
Yeah, we've got two minutes. Took a minute.
Okay, get down to...
We're still going to have a break, right?
Yes, we're having a break. We've got two minutes left.
Takes a whole people that long, longer than that. Had a bear come in my yard two nights ago and strip all the bark off the tree from about eight foot all the way down. Beautiful tree.
Sounds like it'd be some bird shot.
Pardon?
Trees down.
If a bear comes into my yard, it's a bird shot. I'm not going to shoot a bear over a tree.
That's a bird shot.
You shoot a shot.
Pardon?
Probably the same bear.
From the reach that he had, he's not small.
It took like a three-hour nap. I think they put that one down.
No, this one was just there.
Was it?
Okay, maybe it's another little skinny one.
It's a little bear, probably.
Little blond-eared one.
Six hundred pounds.
Yeah, she's got to my garden for about three hours.
She, her and my dog are going back and forth with Mark and Kim.
Yeah, it's a cute little bear. He used to go out in the bushes and miss the bears.
Yeah, I took all my bear bushes out.
Three minutes was a long time.
In the backyard.
Local bear.
It's going pretty fast.
I've got short balls, so you need five-foot bears.
I don't eat my bumbered duck.
I threw it on my truck, and I came home and it was clean as sand.
Oh, don't you do that in the kitchen!
And he's like, oh, no, I don't want to mess up the kitchen. I'm like, oh, really?
He's like, oh, it's okay. I washed it.
We'll go ahead and reconvene the regular meeting, and we are under Assembly discussion. Jared?
Just wanted to make my conflict of interest statement again. We did it a couple meetings ago, but since we're voting on it today, I thought I'd bring it up one more time. Let's see, I am, oh, gosh, there's so many. With Kodiak College, I am a faculty member that teaches at Kodiak College, but I'm employed by the University of Alaska, and this funding goes to students, not to, my program is my salary, and my salary is set by a CBA that's approved by the state legislature. But I do work at that institution there. I am on staff at KMXT. So, discussions about KMXT I will not, do not intend, will not participate in. And then, I do a small summer theater camp for the Kodiak Arts Council, in which I receive a stipend. That stipend is from the tuition revenue that's generated. But I thought I would point that one else also, and recuse myself from talking about Kodiak Arts Council. Following the legal opinions from the past years, it is recommended that I can vote on, I can discuss all other nonprofit organizations and can vote on the total package, but will recuse myself from discussing KMXT and the Kodiak Arts Council.
Thank you, Jared. Wanted to get that on the record. So, thank you. Any discussion?
Excuse me.
Larry?
On the motion, so?
No, no, just that information on the record. Any further? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance number 2026-4, Amending Various Sections of the Kodiak Island Borough Code Title 17, Zoning, Related to Assisted Living Residents. Jared?
Move to advance ordinance number FY 2026-04 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on July 16th regarding a code amendment to various sections of Title 17 related to assisted living facilities. The commission voted to recommend approval of the changes with resolution fiscal year
Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Lidue.
Yes.
Mr. Sharret.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside.
Yes.
Mr. Ames.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is citizens' comments. For those who wish to call in, the local number again, nine-oh-seven-four-eight-six-three-two-three-one, toll-free number eight-five-five-four-nine-two-nine-two-zero-two. Please turn off your radio or any other listening devices to prevent feedback. For those of you in the room wishing to speak, under citizens' comments, you know the drill by now, please come forward.
I'm Captain David Chato from the Salvation Army. On behalf of the Salvation Army and other nonprofits, I thank you very much for approving funding for nonprofits this year. The Salvation Army, as you may know, has been in the community since nineteen ninety-two, and we can only do as much as we can do with the support of generous contributions from the borough and the city, and from private citizens, and from others, companies as well. And in this age of increased costs for everyone, we're directly interacting with people that are not doing too well. They need economic supports, they need emotional supports and spiritual supports, and we really value your contribution to us to help pass that out into the community. And as the new guy in town, we appreciate your support for the Salvation Army over the years. My wife and I have been in the community now for about a month, a little bit over a month, and we've had a chance to meet some of you in person and talk to you, and we get this overwhelming feeling that the Salvation Army is loved here, and we can really feel that. And I know that that's not a political statement, that is something that comes from everyone's heart. And so I just wanted to wrap up my comments, saying thanks again, and thank you for welcoming us to the community.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Susan?
My name is Susan Smith. I'm the executive director of Brother Francis. I just want to say, I know your job isn't easy, and I appreciate all the time you spend making decisions that are in the best interest of this community. I also want to thank you for all the generosity that you've shown towards nonprofits this year. It is much appreciated. Times are tough right now, especially for FY twenty-six. I also want to invite any of you to come and visit Brother Francis, so you can see exactly where your funds are going and how we use them wisely. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Or do we have any callers? Seeing none, we'll move on to Assembly member comments. Ryan, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I learned about our electric fence issue out at the landfill. I was oblivious to that, and so I hope that we do prioritize that, both at a, at an employee level and also at an assembly level, whatever may be needed to help solidify that and restore the electric fence that has been longstanding in the Kodiak community for as long as I can remember. I am anxious and still awaiting on a hospital discussion, on the Kodiak Island Borough land disposal discussion, a foreclosure list, and I am admittedly way behind on understanding what the adaptation of Yuma is that Mr. Rohr's referenced now a couple of times. I don't know what...
Yumot?
Yeah, I don't know what that is, and I would love to get some more information on that, or at least point it in the right direction. And I appreciate going, staff going after the AHFC, a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar grant may be exactly what we need to stem that conversation for the former mental health facilities. Last, I will leave with a question is, I would like to hear what the disposition of the front desk in our lobby is and what the future holds to that position. I would love to walk into a facility that I'm a part of without feeling like I'm walking in and being interrogated. If I feel like that, I can't imagine what some of our other residents feel like. So, if we could have that discussion either publicly or privately, I would welcome that with arms wide open. Thank you.
Scott?
We fully funded nonprofits this year. That's the first time since I started on the Assembly eight years ago that we've done that. Usually, it's been at a rate of about eighty percent. That's a big deal, and I'm concerned for next year, when nonprofits anticipate that we'll fully fund them again. This time, it was in partly due to unclaimed funding from PILT that just happened to be larger than it was last year by a nice amount. And it worries me, because I, we have a huge number of nonprofits in this town, they're doing wonderful stuff, and now they're going to anticipate that we're going to be able to fully fund them. I don't see us doing that without some increase in revenue somewhere. Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you. I noticed during the manager's report that the manager attended the monthly meeting of the Bell's Flats to review the transition from one contractor to another. Thank you for doing that. I've never heard of any manager doing that kind of thing, and it's typical of things that you do, and I just wanted to appreciate that. I also, this is my sixth time, we've gone through a discussion on nonprofits, and I want to congratulate the Assembly for the best I've ever seen. It was collegial, it was open, it was positive, and I think it generated good results. One of the things I was wondering, and you probably already do this, but if we could post all the nonprofits in a nice, findable place on our website that outlines how much money that the borough and the citizens of Kodiak are moving to support those nonprofits, but also maybe a statement saying, if you want to personally donate, here is the number. We have two Assembly members that are giving their entire borough stipend to nonprofits, and in the old days, which I'm old enough to say, most of these nonprofits were supported by individual donors, and it may fill that gap that we may see from governmental sources. The other, I'll be real quick, there's a lot of people new to Kodiak, and, you know, we joke about bears, and some of us grew up with bears, but when I grew up here, there were no bears. None. Anywhere. I mean, in town. But they're all over now. I mean, bears stopped by my house and fed on a thirty-foot tree, you know, and likes bark, I guess, but they're all over, and a lot of our citizens don't know anything, and we have some of the best bear experts in the nation. And I'm wondering if maybe the manager, the mayor, could sit down with Mr. Savota and do a call-in show, so people can ask questions, because even though he was testifying during, you know, introduction, I couldn't ask him questions, but I wanted to ask him a lot of questions, and I think the public, and maybe if you have time, that maybe the manager and the bear expert can set a time where the public can, maybe on KMXT or something?
We already have something scheduled.
Oh, good. The other is, I was interested to note that our current garbage contractor, refuse?
Waste.
manages all of the transfer sites in Fairbanks, and had a lot of information just talking in the hallway. And when our contract comes up in a year or two, if we're even thinking of transfer sites, we need to be meeting regularly to try to at least review it, so we have good information. And I really, if the mayor hasn't, hasn't used up all the travel money going where he needs to go, it might be good for a couple of Assembly members and maybe someone from the landfill committee to go to Fairbanks and see what's going on, because every time we bring it up, someone shuts it down and says it costs too much. But I've seen them in operation, and I really believe we need to take a look at that. The prayer tonight was outstanding. You set a standard for us that, you talked about integrity in decision-making and several other words, and I'm going to have to go back and look at what you actually said, but you defined clearly what being on the Assembly should all, should be about, and set a high standard, and I was going, wow. So, thank you. It's very nice. And you could tell Major Davis, it was better than his. And, but I really appreciate that. And just to correct you, the Salvation Army was here in nineteen sixty-six, working with kids, giving out models, and they met in the carpenter's hall, and the only person in this room that knows where the carpenter hall used to be would be this gentleman here. You might have forgot, because he's so old, but the Salvation Army here was much earlier than what you just said, and I know because they helped my family.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Steve?
A couple of years ago, I knew they had some trouble with the fence, the landfill. I did not know it was continuous, ongoing, in the number of bears that are actually there. I'm pretty sure, after hearing Assembly members and the report, that engineering in the landfill will be looking into dealing with this and what needs to be done, because that's a much larger number than I was used to fifteen years ago. The other comment I have is, I do like the idea of follow the standards, follow things, and if things have been overlooked in the past or let go, no. The only way you can have a fair and level playing field is if these are the rules and everybody has to go by them. I'm glad to hear that we maybe have ticked a few contractors off, as was mentioned, but hopefully they're understanding that this is the plan going forward. Thank you.
Dave?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I'll too share blame for being oblivious to the status of our electric fence. If we can afford in this state to maintain electric fences to keep prisoners in, we should be able to afford to keep the bears out. I consider it to be critical infrastructure, so my sincere hope is that we will hear a plan to have that fully operational soon. I'd like to echo comments we heard during public comment about the lack of code enforcement. It's been a pet peeve of mine with the borough for a very long time. I agree that a rule's only a rule if it's enforced, so the Borough Uniform Minor Offenses Table, or Yumot, should either be revoked or enforced. I'm looking forward to an update on the software that was discussed about four months ago for monitoring short-term rentals in the community, so we can revisit that discussion sooner than later and not let it die on the vine. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Jared?
Bears and electric fences. So, my son Lucas has been out at the Karlook Weir with fish and game this summer, and the bears figured out how to turn it off, how to unplug it. So, oh, my gosh, they're wild, aren't they? But no, it still needs to be looked at. I was in Texas for past week, week and a half, so thank you for allowing me to get off the island, have a little vacation. Texas as a tourist is just lovely, and the trout are great. I came back, though, to the news of these, I don't know if you're familiar with Governor Dunleavy's administrative orders three-fifty-nine and three-sixty that just came out a couple of days ago. I think they have some pretty serious ramifications for our community and for how the borough does business. Three, maybe I'm getting them backwards, but three-fifty-nine, maybe three-fifty-nine is about the regulations, or was that about the grants? Anyway, one of them's about, they're pretty much doing a Doge thing with, with regulations, state regulations and grants, and they're going to try to look at everything over the next six to nine to twelve months. And I know that a lot of the things that we do here in the borough are tied to state regulations, and a lot of our community partners are tied to state regulations. So, if they actually go forward with this, there's going to be a lot of changes and a lot of rapid changes, and so I think this is going to put some pressure on staff to keep up with these things and some of our community partners. And then with the state grants, they are going to be looking at and probably eliminating or rescinding a lot of state grants that go to non-state-of-Alaska entities. They're, they're going to be, it's very explicitly stated, they're going to be targeting non-governmental organizations. So, the nonprofit support that we voted in this year is going to be huge, and if these changes with this administrative order go through next year, it's going to be even worse, a worse state for our worst conditions for our nonprofits financially next year. So, so happy news. All right, I think that's it. Thank you.
Beau?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just wanted to, you know, continue on the topic of bears, just think, think the manager and Director Allen, I'm sure we can identify some solutions in the near future here, and just, just continue to state that any support you need from the Assembly to approve, freeing up some resources to help with that. I know our staffing is limited, and they're working hard day in, day out, but can only do so much. So, anything we can do to approve funding to help make their lives easier to help address this issue, I'm happy to, happy to support that. Folks who are unsure who to contact when bears are in their yard or messing with their trash or in the neighborhood, I think there is some confusion there. Please spread the word that if you want to let someone know that there's a bear in your area, please contact the Alaska State Troopers. They have a wildlife detachment here, and they will come to your home and, and see what they can do about that. It's great that folks are sharing bear locations on social media, that's fantastic, but add another layer to that, and add that people should contact the Alaska State Troopers. They can and will help. So, I think people are unaware or confused on who to contact. Alaska State Troopers, and they can help you out.
Thank you. The next Assembly work session is scheduled on Thursday, August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at six-thirty PM, and the next Assembly regular meeting is scheduled on Thursday, August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, at six-thirty PM, and they're both in the Assembly chambers. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Roll call vote on the motion. That's what it says.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Mr. Sharret?
No.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes and one no.
We, we are adjourned at eight-oh-seven PM. Thank you for attending. Bye-bye.
Yeah, you just have to do it. I know you have a lot on your plate. You just have to do it. There's always going to be a lot.